We will call the October 5th, 2022 Orman Beach Regular City Commission Meeting to Order. It is exactly 7:00 PM and welcome. We've had quite a week this week and it's nice to see you all. Our Public Works Director this evening was our greeter, Sean Finley, and our City Engineer, Alex Schuman. Sean wrote in an email that I got earlier today that we, and I was pleased to see this, we are well on the road to recovery, or well on the road to returning to normal. And that gives you a good feeling when you realize how hard our staff has worked over the last 10 days, both preparing for enduring and responding to the storm event that we just experienced. We had our, suffered our issues, but when you look around the state and other countries, we fared, I think, far better than those other areas. So in that sense, we're very lucky and we continue to recover and continue to work to get back to normal as much as possible. I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you tonight. To my right, your left is our Recording Secretary, Taylor Lockard. Next is City Clerk, Susan Dotteris. Then we have Commissioner from Zone 1, Dwight Selby.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Commissioner from Zone 2, Troy Kent.
Evening, everybody.
To my left and your right, it was relayed to me that Deputy Mayor Persis is not going to make it tonight. She's on her way back from a trip, and I know she regrets not being here, but apparently her flight was changed and she is stuck in the Atlanta Airport. So she won't be with us. She may be listening online, I don't know, but I did want to relay that. She was trying to get back here for this meeting. Next is Commissioner from Zone 4, Rob Littleton.
Hey, everyone.
Our City Manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley. City Attorney, Randy Hayes. And way to the left and way to your right, we have our Police Chief, Jesse Godfrey, and our Fire Chief, Howard Bailey, who also have been working very hard these last few days, doing a lot of problem solving and a lot of responding to the needs of our community and our residents. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and we will have the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight is given by Pastor Greg Holmgren from Tamoka Christian Church. And if you would, please rise for the invocation.
Thank you all very much for having me tonight. I appreciate it. If you don't mind, I'd love to share a little bit of scripture before I pray. I promise not to give a sermon. It's from Romans 13, verse 1 through 7. Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established. The authorities that exist have been established by God. Consequently, whoever rebels against the authority is rebelling against what God has instituted, and those who do so will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. You want to be free from fear of the one in authority, then do what is right, and you will be commended; for the one in authority is God's servant for your good. But if you do wrong, be afraid; for rulers do not bear the sword for no reason. They are God's servants. Agents of rats bring punishment on the wrongdoer. Therefore, it is necessary to submit to the authorities, not only because of possible punishment, but also as a matter of conscience. This is also why you pay taxes, for the authorities are God's servants, who give their full time to governing. Give to everyone what you owe them. If you owe taxes, pay taxes. If revenue, then revenue, and if respect, then respect. If honor, then honor. Today, you are recognized with honor and respect. Also, I did pay my taxes. So let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for this governing and authority that you have instituted. I pray blessings over the city government, that they do what is right, that you give them kind hearts to follow your perfect will. Please bless the city of Orman Beach as we go through this turbulent time. Bless those who have been affected by natural disasters, Father. We lift them up to you. We pray for protection and provision for them. We pray also that you give wisdom and knowledge to these leaders of the city and also our community leaders, that they may lead these people to do what is right. Pray this in holy and precious name of Jesus.
Amen.
If I just may mention one thing, Tuesday at Tamoka Christian Church, we are going to have a food drop that has enough food for 500 families, and that is open to the entire community. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Greg, if you'll get us those details, we can help push out that message, but thank you for doing that. All right, this is the fun part of the meeting where we get to honor people who have done some amazing things. And is Lori Copeland in the audience? I think I saw her earlier. Lori, if you'll come up. And bring whoever you want with you. Lori, you're one of our favorites as a City of Orman Beach employee, so I wanted to start with you tonight because you're special, the work you do is special, and you do it in such a kind, bless you, such a kind and caring way. I wanted to really start this meeting by honoring you and spotlighting the hard work that you do. So I'm going to present you with this proclamation, and I'll ask you to hold it like that so everybody can see it. And I'm going to read just a little bit about what you do on a daily basis. Whereas Lori Copeland is an asset to the city and touches the lives of many on a daily basis, her dedication creates a positive impact in our community. And whereas Lori started her career with the city in 2005 as a summer camp counselor, the following year she was hired as a part-time Special Populations Counselor and in 2007 as a part-time Special Populations Therapeutic Aid. In 2012, Lori secured a full-time position as Nova Recreation Center and Special Populations Coordinator. Lori was awarded Employee of the Year in 2014. Are you surprised? I hope you're surprised. I hope nobody told you about this proclamation. Okay. Whereas Lori is involved with a therapeutic recreation summer day camp known as Club T-Rac for special needs children ages 7 to 18. This camp is one of Lori's favorites because her true passion is working with the special needs pop and watching them grow year after year. And whereas Lori discovered her passion of working with special needs children in high school while working at the Duval Home in Deland, prior to working with the city, she was a teaching assistant for Volusia County Schools. And whereas Lori has a degree in early childhood education and recently earned a bachelor's degree in Recreation Sports Management focusing in recreational therapy from Florida International University, she has completed training and certification programs from Daytona State College, Blaze Sports, J.D. Williams, and the National Council for Behavioral Health. And Lori also has achieved Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist designation, I think I got that out, a certification only obtained by 19% of her peers in the United States. And whereas Lori also recently received the Florida Festivals and Events Association Sensational Award for a Community Outreach Program for her work with the City of Orman Beach Shining Star Pageant, now therefore, I Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire Commission, all of our employees and staff, and our residents as well, am proud to proclaim today, October 5th, 2022, as a day to recognize Lori Copeland in the City of Orman Beach and urge all residents to join with me in honoring Lori for her dedication and congratulating her for furthering her education. Congratulations.
I want to say thank you and introduce the two people right here. Shoshana has been in the pageant since she was, what, six, seven? So we keep moving her up and letting her perform, and she is why I do the pageant. I hate, well, when I first started, I did not like the pageant. I do not like the stage. But my job is to make sure she signs brightly and all of her companions. Yes, and she does it. And then Coral is my assistant. She helps me have everybody shine, and this is my mom. So thank you very much. And too bad Siobhan's not here. I have my own day.
Oh, well, come on down. How's that? Better? All right, next is Hispanic Heritage Month, and who do we have accepting on behalf of the Hispanic population? If you want to introduce yourselves.
My name is Lourdes Leon, and I am the President of the Volusia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, now service Volusia Seminole and Flagler.
My name is Alexandra Tyson. I'm the Director of Networking with the Volusia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
My name is Joseph Hearn. I'm the Vice President of the Volusia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and we like to recognize all of our populations in our city, because each one brings important attributes that make us a great city. And so it's an honor to be able to recognize you, honor you, and to have a community with diverse backgrounds. Whereas the Observation of Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. Whereas Hispanic Americans are the largest minority group in the United States today, and generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous, leaving a permanent mark on our government, culture, and economy. Whereas there are more than 90,000 people of Hispanic or Latino origin living in Volusia County, many of them here in Orman Beach, the Hispanic community, including businesses, have an impact on our county and city through their commitment to family, faith, creativity, and hard work. And whereas during Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich history, traditions, and contributions of Hispanic Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor and embrace the Hispanic culture through celebration, education, camaraderie, and more. Now therefore, I Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Orman Beach, and encourage all residents to join in paying tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our city and community. Congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us here, and it's a great pleasure, and I'm very humbled to receive this, because we are growing. Like you said, very much, the Hispanic population is growing very, very much, and we try to bridge the Hispanics' businesses with the non-Hispanic businesses. So people have the conception that we are only here for the Hispanic population. We're not. We have about maybe 50% of our membership is actually Americans, because they want to know, they want to learn how to get there. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate it. And you want to say something else?
Yeah.
Oh, gracias. Marilo, muchas gracias, porque ella fue la que mandó la información para que nos dieran esta proclamación, así que muchísimas gracias por hacer eso y a celebrar, a seguir celebrando. Gracias.
We just want to thank the City of Orman Beach and all the residents, because it's a time to embrace culture in our communities. It's a time where people are in need, and it's great to see you acknowledging this day and understanding the importance of having this culture in our community. I'm sure everyone here has had Latin food, maybe done a little salsa dancing, and it just brings such a vibrant part of our world and our community. So we thank you very much for the recognition.
And then last, but definitely not least, continuing on with the theme of Hispanic Heritage Month, I'd ask for Sidney Sanford to come on up, and anybody you want to bring with you? This was the perfect addition to the meeting tonight, because it carried right in with the theme of Hispanic Heritage Month. And when you hear what this young lady has done, I think you'll be impressed. We're proud to have her in Orman Beach and just an amazing history, short history, but history of accomplishments and a very bright future. Whereas Sidney Sanford, an Orman Beach resident, works diligently to demonstrate outstanding role model characteristics as a young Hispanic female citizen within the community. And whereas Sidney is successful in many accomplishments, including academics, aerospace training, volunteerism, and servant leadership. And whereas Sidney depicts academic excellence with a weighted 4.3 GPA and is in the top 3% of her class at Atlantic High School, her achievements consist of belonging to the National Honor Society, graduating from the United States Naval Academy STEM Program, serving as Vice President of the Technology Engineering and Aerospace Academy, and currently dual-enrolled at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University studying aeronautical science. Upon graduation, she plans to join the United States Air Force. And whereas Sidney has been a cadet of the Civil Air Patrol since 2019, she graduated from the Civil Air Patrol Flight Academy and is one of two females to have been selected and earned their pre-solo glider wings. Sidney is currently completing the requirements to earn her private pilot's license and many more accolades through the Civil Air Patrol Program. And whereas Sidney earned the Gold Award for her involvement in the Girl Scouts, the National Tuskegee Airmen Medal Award, and the AMVETS Recognition Award for diligence and discharge of duties, as well as the Servant Leadership Medal this year, Sidney has volunteered in many capacities, including color guard, and has served as a Volusia County Junior Lifeguard. Now therefore, I Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 5th as a day to recognize Sidney Sanford in the City of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to congratulate Sidney on her many amazing accomplishments and recognize her for serving as an outstanding citizen of our community. Congratulations.
I want to say thank you, God, for this wonderful opportunity and this amazing day that we survived the hurricane, we're still here today, and that I want to thank everyone here, my parents for helping me, the mayor, and everyone here in this room for helping me and supporting me, and this is just a great day. It's great that, you know, we all get to come together as a community and as a city, and that we all get to achieve great things. So thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and First of all, I talked to Sidney prior to meeting, and Atlantic High School is going to start a fishing club, and I told them, if there's anything that I can do, we're going to do it for them. Okay? Ike Leary, Kasim Park. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Kent, Bob and Caroline, if he's here, they called to check on the base shop during the hurricane, and to Joyce for coming out and checking out everything. I appreciate it. Couple of things. Over Labor Day, we gave out 58 hot dogs, which was good. We had pretty good coming out. I thought it was nice. Saturday, we had a fishing contest coming up over here at the pier, and we're going to give out hot dogs and some real nice prizes. Okay, I want to talk about Kasim Park. In 2020, we started looking at what we were going to do over there. Sean Finley and I, and John Hall from Hallam, and Oval worked a lot of hours to come up with a plan, okay? And we finally did, and Joyce and I had the same concept in mind, concept two, according to Sean Finley. So we had COVID, and all this goes by, and I understand, okay, we're going to do a whole lot. Okay? Now I am informed, well, let me back up. There was several Main Street meetings, where the first one, they come in at the 11th hour with a concept five, okay? Which finally got voted out, okay? Then concept one only got two votes out of the 24 people that was there. It was out. So I thought, you know, everything was going to start. I understand that the cost is way up there now, but now, according to Alex, the City Engineer, Ziv Cohen is looking at it with concept one and concept five. I just don't understand. I'm always there. If you need to talk to me, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you, Ike. Next is David Williams.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. My name is David Williams. I am a lifelong resident of this area. I've lived here for 75 years, except for my military service. And I'm concerned about something that's going on, that in talking with Chris Mason in the Building Department, apparently Orman is not aware of it, and that is solicitation by roofing contractors to get a quote "free roof." There is a company called Apex Roofing, which is in our area, the Northbrook area up here, and they have been here prior to the hurricane. Then the state of Florida passed a Senate Bill 76, which prohibits the free inspection process. These people are continuing to snub their nose at that. You have an ordinance that prohibits solicitations without a permit. I spoke with Chris. Chris says he has no knowledge of this. He's the head of the Building Department, I believe, I was told. I find that incredulous, that he'd never heard of it. I have at least 25 people that they've knocked on their doors. They've been to my door twice. Interestingly enough, I've asked for identification. The first guy came up, gave me an ID, says Brett Favre. Yeah, right. Brett Favre was a great quarterback in college and in the pros. The second guy that came up after the storm was named Carlos Rivera. Now, that guy, I asked, I want to see your driver's license, not this little placard. I don't have a driver's license. I explained to him the law. He said, oh yeah, we're aware of that. We're not offering roof inspections. I'm just here to advise you if you've got any damage, and then you're supposed to call us. You need to call us and tell us. My question becomes to the Commission, what's Orman doing about that? I called when he was there, asking someone to come out and inspect her, to come out and catch him. The attitude that I seem to be getting is, well, I guess you're going to hogtie him and keep him until we come up, come by. He said, they have no, Chris said, you have no procedure for that right now, how to deal with it. So my question would be, who do we call? When do we call? And how are you going to handle it? Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. The minutes have been sent to the Commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Move approval? Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The following items are community redevelopment items. The City Commission in Orman Beach serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the City Commission Meeting and call the CRA Meeting to Order. As Chairman of the CRA, I will open the public hearings and ask our Secretary to read Resolution Number 2022-118.
Resolution Number 2022-118, a resolution of the City Commission individually enacting as the Community Redevelopment Agency for the Central Business District and adjacent areas, authorizing the execution of an annual services agreement for Orman Beach Main Street between the City, Agency, and Orman Beach Main Street, Inc., for the promotion of economic, physical, and aesthetic redevelopment and maintenance of the Orman Beach Main Street District and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2022-118, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 2022-118.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to recommend approval to the Orman Beach City Commission. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously and close the public hearings.
Mayor, if we can leave that. I didn't mean to cut off comment, because I did want, by making the motion, but I didn't want to say that. I think Main Street does a fabulous job, and there are several representatives here from, you know, our acting interim Executive Director, Becky Parker, Nancy's here, the President, and a couple other board members. So, you know, for the, all of the events that they produce for the city, they really help to make this sort of the heart and soul of Orman Beach, especially in the downtown. So I just, I think this is a wonderful investment that we make. We also get a lot of re... We also get a lot of really good advice from their various committees on, you know, economic development, as well as design and characteristics of the downtown, which, which really sets us apart. And recently, I'll mention also, they sponsored, they were hosts of the Florida Main Street Association, and had other Main Streets from all over, I think there were 50 or 60 maybe, represented there. And people were, many of them had never been to Orman Beach, didn't know anything about it, and they left incredibly impressed, not with, in addition to our programs, but also the beauty of our city, and, and the enthusiasm of the businesses and, and people in the downtown. So, Main Street, my hat's off to you, you guys are doing a fabulous job, and for any business that's located in the downtown, or near the downtown, or anywhere in Orman Beach, we all should be members of Orman Main Street. It's a very modest membership fee, and, and many of us probably participate in our events and might not even realize it's a Main Street hosted event, so, thank you, Main Street.
Thank you, Commissioner, or I should say CRA Agency member, and now I'll recognize CRA Agency member Troy Kent.
Yes, and my comments now will also carry over as City Commissioner in just a few moments. But, just three things I wanted to mention about this. First of all, they are asking for an increase of $5,000 to go to $70,000, which I think is appropriate, and hopefully the Commissioner in a few moments will approve that. That's one thing. The second thing is, you know, three of us have just a couple meetings left after, after this one, the city of Orman Beach. And there's an individual I think that needs to be recognized, because he met with me about 19 years ago, because he had a vision for how a Main Street really should operate and work, and that is a gentleman named Bill Partington Senior. And he was passionate about it, I believe is still passionate about it, read books on it, traveled to different Main Streets. I was a brand new elected Commissioner, sat down with me and fed me all kinds of information he could about how a Main Street was supposed to operate. We have enacted some wildly successful programs, like the Property Improvement Grant Program, where we use CRA dollars to work with the property owners to, for various things, but most of them have been used to enhance the way our downtown Main Street area looks. It's funny how quick you forget, but if we, if we pulled up a picture of 12, 14 years ago, of what this road looked behind us, many of you would gasp and say, there's no way that was your Main Street. But it was, and it's incredible now, thanks to Main Street, thanks to this City Commission, and thanks to Bill Jones. Because I call him as I see him, and that's, and that's who I'm thanking on this. But I wanted to make sure that I mentioned Bill Partington Senior for his leadership with that. Now, my next comment, I said I had three, is for the two Commissioner-elects in the audience. But Commissioner Selby, are you the current?
Yes.
Main Street representative for this commission?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I'm just going to ask you a question really quickly, on a scale of one to 10, how beneficial was it for you to be on it? 10 being the highest, 1 being the lowest?
It's 10, and it's a pleasure to do it.
Yeah, so when I was first elected, Lori and Travis, I served for a couple of terms as the Main Street representative, and it was fabulous. Travis, it's in your zone. I'm, I'm just going to, I'm just going to put that out there, it's in zone two. And for either one of you, I, I would advocate for either of you to serve on that board, and if you don't serve on it this time, if the voters of Orman Beach think you're doing a good job, and they like you, and you're fortunate to get another term to serve your bosses, the residents of Orman Beach, maybe you'll get it the second time. Because it's, it's an extremely beneficial experience, and get with Lori and Bert and look at the pictures of that Main, of our Main Street 12 years ago. Our memories fade, and you forget, it just, it looks so beautiful now, and the medians work, and, you know, the pedestrian cross works, and, and everything about it just seems to be clicking and working, but it wasn't always, always like that. So, we've already voted on it, so, as the CRA, so I will be supporting this as a, as a Commissioner in just a moment. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll say something.
Thanks, sir.
Main Street has helped us eliminate blight, they've enhanced businesses, they've helped us utilize our assets properly. It's been a great partnership, and I can't wait to see what they have in store for the future.
Well said by all three gentlemen, and as Chairman of the CRA, I'll just add that I had the opportunity to present to the Main Streets from around Florida, when they were here for three or four days, about a month ago, and Nancy and Becky, you guys did an amazing job with that, so many positive comments. Main Street brings tens of thousands of people into our downtown every year, and they have positive experiences, whether it's the Celtic Festival, the seafood festival, all the different events that you do draw people from the entire central Florida area, whether it's Jacksonville, Orlando, Titusville. They're just wildly popular, because this is a beautiful place to visit, and then the events provide entertainment that draws people into the downtown, and that's exactly what you want to do. The Commissioners touched on the fact that, you know, through the years, and when I did my presentation, that really staff prepared, and I think this presentation should be given to the Main Street Board, there were a few Main Street Board members there, but to the full Board, I'd be happy to do it, or we can have somebody from staff do it, but to see picture after picture after picture, side by side, what it used to look like versus what it looked like when the Property Improvement Grant was done, just blew everybody away. I mean, they couldn't believe it. When you talk about getting rid of blight, Commissioner Kent, when you talk about you wouldn't believe, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, that it would look like it does now. And you see people walking in the downtown now. There's a walkability aspect, and there's destinations here, thanks to Bill Jones, thanks to Main Street, that didn't exist before. So, we've created that in partnership with a lot of people, and it's benefited our city and all of our residents, and it's been great to be a part of that, and thank Main Street for all your, all your hard work on that. So, at this point, I believe I already closed the public hearings, and we will reconvene the City Commission meeting and move to the consent agenda. Are there any consent agenda items that a Commissioner would like to remove?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And are there any items that Commissioners would like to comment on consent agenda items at this time? I, just one, and it's Joe Daniels being willing to serve again on our housing authority. Joe is incredible anyway, he's an awesome individual, he's always been there for Orman Beach, and to step up and to continue to be willing to serve in an important role, brings a steady hand, a wisdom, kindness, and honestly, a great, great spirit of joy, and just, I think having him on that board is an incredible addition, so, thank you, sir, for your willingness to continue, and I wish you, I wish you a good term. I think that was everything that I had. So, we will move to public hearings, 9A, I'll open the public hearings and ask our city clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance Number 2022-28, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Orman Beach, said property located at 1405 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 3136-01-45-0010, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Orman Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Orman Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance Number 2022-28, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9B.
Ordinance Number 2022-29, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Orman Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of three parcels of real property totaling 33.31 plus or minus acres, generally located at Old Dixie Highway Implantation Oaks Boulevard, Volusia County Property Preiser Parcel Numbers 3124-00-00-0022, 3239-03-17-0130, and 3239-03-07-0100, from Orman Beach Low Density Residential and Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to Orman Beach Recreation Open Space, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance Number 2022-29, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-29.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 10A.
Ordinance Number 2022-30, an ordinance recognizing declarations of the state of emergency in the state of Florida and county of Volusia, including the city of Orman Beach, as declared by the federal, state, and local governments, declaring a local state of emergency in the city of Orman Beach, authorizing temporary emergency administrative procedures to provide for the expeditious and coordinated management of permit, the building permit applications and fees, waiving specific permits and fees for the removal of certain trees, authorizing the issuance of onsite permits for repair of damages caused by Hurricane Ian, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first and only reading of ordinance Number 2022-30, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards on 10A.
Yeah, I'll move approval for that ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 10B.
Ordinance Number 2022-31, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 by amending the General Fund 001, Stormwater Utility Fund 107, Airport Fund 108, Local Law Enforcement Trust Fund 109, Economic Development Fund 110, Grants Fund 116, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Equipment Renewal and Replacement Fund 302, Public Safety Vehicle and Equipment Fund 305, Transportation Improvements Fund 308, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Water and Wastewater Fund 401, Vehicle Replacement Fund 408, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, and General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance Number 2022-31, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our Finance Director, Kelly McGuire, to speak briefly on this item.
Certainly, good evening. This is a request to amend the fiscal year 2122 budget. It's largely made up, as is often the case, of capital project amendments, so that's moving dollars from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22. And those capital projects that we're asking you to amend, you've already approved those individually as part of the budget, as part of the bid award. In addition to that, there are the transfers and duplicates, so those are essentially additional accounting entries, they're not actual dollars going out. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Kelly. I don't have any cards.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-31.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And here we are at discussion and direction items, and we start with the city attorney I don't have any cards, so, Commissioner, it's up for, up for discussion. Pretty good evaluation.
It's great.
Anybody want to start?
I'll just, I'll just say, Mr. Hayes, working with you these last six years has been wonderful. I always like to say that you've got my back, and it's always been comforting knowing that when I'm sitting up here and doing all this, so, you know, I won't be working with you much longer, but you've always been great, and your score is reflected.
Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. Randy, a cumulative average score of 4.95 out of 5. I mean, he's close to perfection. I would agree with everything Commissioner Littleton just said, these 19 years of working alongside of you. You know, you are an example of what every city attorney should be, you are professional, you are tough when you need to be, you explain things for the layperson, you protect your commission, but you equally protect your city and the residents, and I'll just tell you, I'm better for knowing you. You are filled with honesty and integrity, and the city of Orman Beach is so darn lucky to have you. And, Mayor, after everybody's comments, are we, are we still talking about wages at this time, or no? I just see Joyce shaking her head. Did we, did we, did we agree upon that, where they will get what our general employees get? We, we, we agree, I just want to make sure, I know it wasn't always like that, and I wanted to make sure that, for the audience, and for the Commissioner-elect Sergeant, Commissioner-elect Tolland, it wasn't always like that. You know, they went four, five, six years with no raise, and you can't do that to people. It's not a healthy thing to do to people. At the time, we voted to give ourselves a decrease in pay, because times were tough, but they went four, five, six years without any raise. So, we fixed that now, is what I'm hearing, Joyce, is that right? So, yeah, so we fixed that, so that, you know, we adjusted their wages, and then after we made that adjustment, so, future commissions will not have to do that, now, they will receive what the general employees receive, to keep them on par with something. Whenever, whenever a raise happens, they get something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Hayes, the city, the residents of the city of Orman Beach are fortunate to have you as their city attorney. You live in the city, you love the city, you, you're very long-serving. I think you've worked here for almost 30 years, is that correct? Yeah. And so, that institutional knowledge that you bring to the city and to all the matters that come before us is invaluable, and, and, and that is reflected in the, in the, in the rank, the scores that you receive from this commission. So, thank you very much for your service, and I hope you will continue to serve this commission even after Mr. Kent, Mr. Littleton, and Mr. Selby are gone from this commission. I hope you will continue to serve here. Thank you.
Great, great comments, gentlemen, by all, and I will rely on my written comments in the, in the evaluation. I put, Randy continues to perform at an extremely high level. Orman Beach is blessed, lucky, to have his thoughtful approach and cool, calm demeanor. Randy's passion for the challenging job, along with his knowledge of the law, good judgment, and perseverance in a challenging time, make him an incredible asset for the residents of Orman Beach. Essayist Thane Rosenbaum wrote, quote, "Lawyers are much more focused on rational, logical, and objective criteria, to the exclusion of the emotional, subjective, and sometimes irrational," unquote. I think Randy is that kind of lawyer, and Orman Beach is a better, safer place because of that. I really didn't cover how hard you work in that, Randy, I'm sorry about that, I should have. I'm sorry about that, I should have, but, uh, you really do work hard, and the great relationship that you have with your peers in the legal community, uh, with city staff that you work with, just adds to the benefits altogether, so. And now, Randy, after all that praise, I'm going to make you work. Do you want us to, uh, have a motion and second to accept this evaluation, or just, uh, just move on to the city manager evaluation? What do you want to do from here?
It's your preference. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I thank you for the kind words. It's a pleasure to work with all of you. I'm going to miss the three of you that are going to be gone here soon. Look forward to working with the, the new commissioners as they come on board. The, uh, evaluations is really a reflection of the dedicated people that work for us, and, uh, I think that's, their work is included in here. We may be the face of what you see, but, and Joyce would tell you the same thing, uh, we wouldn't be here but for them and for you, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, do you want to... Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we accept the evaluation, make it part of the official record.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we'll move to eleven B, the city manager evaluation. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes, so Ms. Shanahan, it looks like, um, your overall rating is a, is a four-point-nine-six. Is that right? Is that what I saw? Yeah. No, I think you beat Randy, you got a four-point-nine-five, and you got a four-point-nine-six. So, just so everybody knows, just so everybody knows, Randy usually beats Joyce by a point or two, and for whatever reason, this year, Joyce is edging Randy by a point, and, um, I'm going to tell you, it, it, it wasn't all, it, it wasn't always like this. I'm going to share something that both of them have said to me, I don't think they'll mind sharing this, but Randy Hayes has told me privately what a great asset Joyce Shanahan is to the city of Ormond Beach, and what a pleasure it is to work with her. And Joyce Shanahan has said what a total, complete asset Randy Hayes is to this city, and what a pleasure it is to work with him. Uh, and, you know, I, I'll just read the comments that I wrote at the end. Joyce Shanahan is a tremendous asset to the city of Ormond Beach. She is the hardest working manager I know, and she truly cares about the city and residents of Ormond Beach. Joyce Shanahan is the best of the best when it comes to city managers. And I'll just tell you, um, a lot of people don't know, but, you know, our fire chief, our police chief, our public works director, our total economic development group, our budget group, everybody answers to, to Joyce. Joyce answers to us, as Randy answers to us. But Joyce also is filled to the gills with integrity and honesty, and she is such a hard worker. I was going to share this at the, at the end of the night, but it's actually appropriate to share right now. A dear friend of mine who lives on the corner of Highland and Beach Street is a widower, and I reached out to him, uh, three days ago, just asked, "How are you with the storm?" He was doing great. He talked about a tree down, and he was hoping to be able to get out soon. I said, "You, you haven't gotten out of your house yet?" He said, "No." So I said, "Heather and I are out and about, we're going to the grocery store right now." "No, don't get me anything." Well, Heather and I went and just got some things that everybody needs, you know, peanut butter crackers, a half a sandwich, Gatorade, and we went to go see him, and we were at the front door, and he wasn't answering. So we walked around the side of the house, he wasn't answering because he was in the side yard talking to the city manager, who was at his house, trying to problem solve the tree that was blocking his driveway on a power line, and she's there trying to help solve a problem in our city. It's just an example that if I didn't share with you, you wouldn't know the type of human she is, the type of hard worker she is, the type of woman she is. She is compassionate and loves the city of Ormond Beach, and, and helped me, you know, it's easy for me to say, working with Randy for nineteen years, but Joyce, how many has it been? Are you've been here thirteen, fourteen? How many years? Thirteen years? It has been an absolute pleasure to work alongside of you, and, um, I wish you nothing but the best. You, you do a tremendous job in our city, and if I can ever help, I'm always a phone call away. Great review, Joyce. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Shanahan, um, we, we also, the, it, this commission and the residents of Ormond Beach are really blessed to have you as our city manager. You, uh, one, one thing that occurred to me was that, you know, there are really only two employees that work for this city commission, it's the city attorney and the city manager, and they hire their own staffs and, and, you know, and in Randy's case, it's, it's not a very big staff. In, uh, Ms. Shanahan's case, it's a huge staff, you know, several hundred employees, and, um, you know, the quality of the people that work for the city of Ormond Beach, from department heads to managers to, uh, online frontline people, um, is exceptional, is unbelievable, and that doesn't happen by accident, that happens because of great leadership. And without a great leader at the very top, hiring other great leaders to run their departments, there's no way you're going to get great people out on the frontline. And so, um, and the fact that you and Randy, uh, work so well together is also a great, uh, is, is a great testimony to, uh, your great leadership skills, and, uh, so we are very lucky to have you. And I, I know that you love the city, and also what Commissioner Kent said, your heart, you know, you, you are a very caring person, incredibly, uh, trustworthy and honorable, and, um, that, you know, permeates everything that you do. And, uh, so to that end, I say, "Thank you. Thank you for serving us, thank you for being here a long time," and, you know, I'm sure that some city managers kind of keep a couple of their bags packed at all times, because, you know, they're on the move pretty often, so, uh, being in one place for thirteen years is quite a testimony. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Selby, you mentioned it big time. Our employees at the city are so great, and it all starts at the top. On Thursday, nine-oh-seven AM, I called Joyce, and, and remember, the storm was still going on. Her, I believe Sean Finley, and one of the chiefs, I can't remember which one, were out driving around the city, checking on damages, debris, and et cetera. That's the type of dedication you get with Joyce Shanahan. Ormond Beach, this commission, and future commissions are lucky to have her. Joyce, I wish you the best in your career and your life, it's been one of the highest honors of my life to work with you. Thank you.
Again, gentlemen, well said, and, uh, I'll just add on, I believe, based on what I've seen, Joyce is the absolute best in the nation, uh, as far as city managers go. The work ethic, uh, the integrity, the open door policy, the willingness and desire to work with everyone, um, and she deals with situations sometimes where there are not easy answers, but she doesn't give up. She's tenacious, and she keeps at it. Uh, the commission, I think Commissioner Kent brought up, it's a commission-manager form of government, and the way our charter is set up, there are two employees that we can hire or fire. That's the city manager and the city attorney. Uh, we have no say in any other employee in the city. And I think this commission respects that, understands it, and works, uh, within those bounds very well, but also it's our responsibility to, to take care of, uh, those two people, and we do that because we see how valuable they are to our residents, and so when it comes to pay, Commissioner Kent, like you pointed out, we finally got them caught up to, uh, an industry standard, if you will, and then set it so that with normal increases, uh, we're being very fair, fair to them. And that doesn't mean it doesn't have to be adjusted occasionally, possibly in the future, uh, but I think we've done a good job with that because we realize how valuable they are. The work ethic, Joyce and Randy too, you know, I drive all over the city at all times of night, and I see Randy's car at the city attorney's office, I see Joyce's car here, and I know it's because you don't just park it here and then use another car to get home. You're, you're here working so hard, so long, you know, Joyce, you're one of the first people here, and you're one of the last to leave, and you lead, lead by example, and, uh, we appreciate that, and the city, the city is better for it. So, thank you all, and then, uh, Joyce, we'll turn it over to you if you want to say anything at this point.
Mr. Mayor and City Commission, it's really a pleasure and an honor, uh, to work for you. It is said that you're only as good as the people that give you direction and the people that carry it out, and it's times like hurricanes where you really understand how well your city works together, and I'm so proud of the men and women, um, in this city. I have gotten compliment upon compliment from people who take the time to write an email about someone that helped with a PAP tech two days after the storm, or someone that picked up garbage, and it's because of those people that our city is so special. It's because of the leadership of this commission, who has a vision, a strategic plan, a, a budget, fiscal austerity, and responsibility that keep this city going in the, in the direction that it's going. So, you know, I, I get emotional by it because I really love the city, and I love our employees because they really care about the city. It's not just a job to them. You know, we have at least a dozen or more employees that lost their homes as part of the storm, and they range from public works directors to police officers, and, you know, we're struggling internally, how do we, how do we manage that? How do we help them through that? But those people were at work every single day during the storm and still are at work. You know, I have my assistant public works director that got six-and-a-half feet water in his house, and he's here. You lost the roof of your building, and you're here, you know? So that's the kind of leadership that this commission provides, and that's the kind of dedication that your employees have, and I'm really very, very proud of them. And, and certainly, um, Mr. Hayes is the best city attorney I have ever known. He is second to none. He has, um, amazing integrity and intuition about things, and I have worked in other communities where there's not a good relationship with your city attorney, and that doesn't make it good for anybody, so I'm grateful to you and your leadership. So, I just want to say thank you, and how proud I am of our city staff, and they really shine during these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Commission, just need a motion and a second.
Yeah, uh, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Just a couple of things about the comments we heard tonight. Um, Mr. Leary, I, I understand what you're saying. We have received commission, commission direction to proceed with a, um, a design person, and that's what we're working with, and we're, we're following the commission's direction. We'll bring that back when we get that back from the rest of the, but that, I don't know, it was a couple months ago that we got that from the commission manager.
Okay, very good. And then, um, the gentleman, Mr. Williams, you spoke about the contractors going door-to-door. We have pushed out information on social media that, you know, be aware of the scams, uh, the police department is aware the chief was in here, oh, he's in the back of the room. I've asked him to give you my, uh, business card, so I'm happy to talk to you further about that, but we are aware of it, and we have been working that issue, so I'm sorry you got misinformation along the way. As I said before, the staff did a great job during Hurricane Ian. Comparatively speaking, I think during the storms of two thousand nine, we had that, like, thirty-nine inches of water, that Central Park area, I think we had about a hundred and seventy homes underwater. I think we had less than twenty this time. So I'm here to tell you that the, the hazard mitigation money, grant money that we got, it helped, it worked. You know, um, we didn't get as much rain, um, as our sister cities, but we got a boatload. I think it was, I think it was higher than that.
Seventeen at least.
Almost eighteen.
Almost eighteen, yep.
So that really helped. Um, staff was pumping down Central Park lakes for two weeks before the storm, uh, trying to clear that, get some freeboard in there. There are certain other, um, low-lying areas that threw our stormwater master, and we're still working on, so, um, I think we did well there. Our debris removal contractor, Crowder Golf, is already on the road, uh, they're picking up, um, Waste Pro was picking up bag debris today, um, so bag debris will be picked up, I don't know if they finished their, um, their, uh, circle of the city, because they do that on, on Wednesdays. Some people have had delay in garbage pickup, and it, it's for a couple of reasons. One, the cans are really full because we didn't have pickup last Thursday or Friday, and then, um, there are long lines at the landfill here, it's empty, your, your debris. And then, right after the storm, the, it had, like, soft shoulders out there, it was difficult to come and go, but Waste Pro's been working till seven PM, and they've been pushed a little bit to catch up, but they're, they're doing their best to catch that up. So, um, if you have any complaints or any questions, uh, with residents, send them to me, and we'll be happy to talk to them, and, and, and Waste Pro has been very, very responsive. Our facility hardening that we did, um, worked, we didn't have any leaks into those buildings. We had a few roof leaks here and there, um, but other than that, we did pretty well. We heard today on the, uh, Volusia County, um, emergency call, all the managers meet online every day, um, for about twenty or thirty minutes to talk about issues that are happening. The damage assessment for Volusia County as a whole, we give them the items that are damaged, and the property appraiser assigns a value to them, is a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. So, uh, we have qualified for disaster relief. The governor has accelerated or extended, um, the ability to get a hundred percent reimbursement for cities for debris removal, you know, because it goes down, like, thirty days out, but I think he's extended it sixty days now, so, uh, that's good, and I think the federal government has also kicked in, so we might not be out of pocket any real dollars. It takes for everybody to get the reimbursement, but thanks to Kelly and Chris, they do a tremendous job doing that. The disaster recovery center, where individuals can help, uh, apply for assistance, will be, uh, coming to eighteen forty-five Holson Back Drive, which was where the health department is, so you can apply. You can apply online for disaster assistance, that's probably the quickest way to do it, you can do it in any, any of the libraries in Volusia County. D-Snap, which is a, a food program, uh, for disasters, it's regularly called the SNAP program, um, it's not yet here for, uh, Volusia County, but maybe Saturday or Sunday, so people can go there for assistance. Our sister cities to the south fare far worse than we do. Um, on the phone call today, we heard from New Smyrna Beach, who said that they had more than a thousand homes flooded, uh, which is really kind of surprising. Port Orange had a lot of flooding there as well, I guess from the rise of Sploosh Creek and the rain, so, you know, we were blessed, I mean, we, we did have a bad storm here, but, uh, it could have been much worse. The, there's also, it's called Team Rubicon, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they are made up of retired military, um, individuals, and we will have up to fifty veterans coming to Volusia County, and they will help residents with cleanup, de-monkey, taking debris out of the curb, so you just have to call the citizen information line, and they, uh, take care of all of that. Seawalls is another big concern for, uh, Volusia County. Um, just to be certain, we are going to have our seawall inspected at, um, Andy Muramano Beachfront Park. We took considerable damage there, it took the stairs and the ramp, um, the, the walk ramp down to the beach approach, it, it took part of the rocks away there, um, the shade structures that were supposed to hold up, didn't hold up, but we'll get new ones, so that's okay, but it's just a little problematic. So, um, most of our parks are going to be opening up in the next couple of days. The vast majority of Central Park, those walking trails, still have trees on them because they aren't the highest priority, want to get them out of the streets and the residents' homes first. Uh, we will be, um, uh, opening those back up, uh, probably Friday, a majority of them will be opening back up. We do have the fishing tournament. We do have the fishing tournament at the pier on Friday. Thank you, Ike, for Saturday, for sponsoring that. And for those of you that don't know, Mr. Leary provides free to our participants fishing rods. And they're not just cheapos, they're really nice rods. And then, on top of that, he cooks hot dogs for all of them and it's a great, great time. And so, it'll be a great event. We also had a wonderful, I don't know if Jen, if we had any pictures of National Night Out. So, we had a great National Night Out yesterday. There's some, I think that we probably had 2,000 people out for that. It was the best ever. The police department did a phenomenal job. They had a petting zoo. They probably had, don't tell the fire chief, but they probably had more people in the gym than they were allowed. Because I was in there and I'm thinking, there's a lot of people in here. They cooked hamburgers and hot dogs. They, you can see a picture there. They dunked the chief, they dunked Captain Roos in the dunk tank. They were giving away fabulous prizes. It was just a random raffle. I mean, you could win a little drone. It was just great, great stuff. So, I think that's exactly what our community needed and they got Owen up here holding an alligator and great pictures by Jolene in the paper today. But, and I'm so sorry, I missed the cow. I love the Chick-fil-A cow, but I missed him. So, he was gone and I got here. But it was a great time and so it was good for our community to have that. And Sean, do you have some numbers? If you could put your PowerPoint up. Just kind of wanted to review some of the hurricane information. Our utilities are getting back to normal. Sean has a few numbers that he can review with you. Yeah, National Night Out was fabulous. And it was so cool. I mean, it was cool temperature, almost needed a sweater, you know?
August.
Makes a big difference.
Covering weather, it was so much different.
Yeah, I think, and you know, the kids were out of school still, so I think it was just, it was good timing. Okay.
Just a couple of things we wanted to just kind of touch on, just to bring up what we did this past week and the direction we're heading. We had a big sandbag distribution. We've been doing the self-sandbagging throughout since June. We've had the pile up there, but we really got hit last week. In those three days, we distributed, we brought 31 trucks of sand in. That translates to about 15,000 sandbags or almost a half a million pounds of sand. It's a lot of sand. We delivered 640 bags to some of our special needs people because we know we want to make sure that they're able to get those as well.
And before he goes on, this is a self-service sand pile, but I will tell you, there was plenty of staff there to help you fill bags. I was kind of like a secret shopper. I went like Tuesday after work and, you know, when you had, well, I had to get my driver's license to figure out who I was. But I waited in line like everybody else, but the people in the pile were so helpful. Staff was helpful. We had great comments on social media for it. It was a little bit of a mess, you know, when we first started it, but the city staff took charge right away and they organized it a little bit better and it really, really worked well and it helped. People were frustrated when they waited in line for several hours and then we were out of bags. So, this has worked well and we put this pile out and when did you put it out?
We keep it out all year long. We've stocked it regularly with bags since June. And like Joyce said, one of the big reasons why we decided to go this route was after Irma and Matthew, where we had hour-long waits on Orchard Street. People waiting to get those bags, having no other way to get them. We wanted people to be able to spend the time preparing their homes, preparing their families, not waiting in line for 10 sandbags. And that was really the reason to go with this route. We keep the staff there to help them to make sure that they can.
Do we still have the device that fills the sandbags?
We do, but it doesn't work as well as it should. Because it requires a lot of effort.
Well, yeah, we'll chat about that because people love that. You know, in the past, they were, the bags were filled and we had people actually putting them in the back of people's vehicles.
Understood.
So, a little perplexed about that, so we'll chat later.
Debris removal, as Joyce mentioned, Crowder Golf is our hauler. We've got oversight and house consulting services. Collection begins today. You're going to see trucks like this on your street and you will see a sticker like this on the truck. You see that truck, you see that sticker, you know that it's our trucks coming to get your debris. It's not somebody else coming in, a gypsy coming into town. So, this is what you're going to see hopefully on every street in the next couple of weeks here. Just to kind of give you a quick little, very quickly on utilities, we did a lot over the past couple of days here to keep water running, to keep sewer flowing, to make sure that we had functioning utilities. Our plants did not go down at all the past couple of days. We preemptively put them on generator power Wednesday afternoon, both of them, because as we all know, when you lose power, it doesn't come all at once. It drips and drabs and goes on and off. We wanted to make sure we had a smooth flow of power. By Friday, 4:30 PM, both plants were fully back on FPN power. We had 29 water breaks over the week. We addressed all those and only had to put two boil water doses out. So, that's great news for us. And we had minimal damage to the water treatment plant, only about $120,000 worth of damage, which is considering what we encountered, very little. The wastewater plant, same thing. We'll put it on generator power, brought it back on FPN power once it was available. During that time, of our 83 lift stations, 35 of them lost FPN power. Eight of those have permanently mounted generators, so those were fluid. We brought our temporary ones around to make sure that they all stayed going. Update that, two out of 83 is now zero out of 83. All of our lift stations are back on FPN power, so that's good news for us. We replaced 10 pep tanks and we had about $100,000 worth of damage. None of this damage is stuff that's going to cause it to be out of compliance or not operate. It's a little bit of operational stuff that we're getting back in play. Stormwater, we had 55 roads that we identified over that period where we did our damage assessment that had some level of flooding on them. It's about 10.3 miles of our 179 miles, so about 5.7 miles. Irma, we had 7.1 miles during May of 2009, we had about 14 and a half miles. One of the big differences that we noticed with this is that a lot of that flooding in the roads was limited mostly to the roads and a little bit onto driveways and into yards. We didn't, as Joyce mentioned, we didn't have the same amount of water from those road flooding that crept up to house flooding. And that's a big deal and that was really the success. Damage assessment this past week, 20 homes plus or minus. We may get some more, may creep up to 30 or 35 as we're seeing people with building permits in, but we're certainly not going to get to 176. These are some of the roads. One thing, one last one I want to show you. This is our Hammock Lane Lake. And as you can see, we started out at 3.6 about a week and a half ago. We pumped it down to 3.1 and it seems like that's not very much for pumping it down over a week's worth of period time. But one of the things that we do as we're pumping down the lakes, all of that groundwater from that surrounding area is also getting pumped out. It works its way towards lake. That frees up space in people's yards and their backyards, which would have otherwise started to flood, we're able to get it down so they have some percolation ability. 1:00 AM on September 29th, that pond had risen from 3.13 to 6.99. We kept pumping and by Friday, or I'm sorry, by Monday, we were down to 5 and 1/2. So, you know, things are working for us. I think we had a pretty successful time with our stormwater. Certainly, the improvements we made at Central Park, the improvements we're making at other places, I think are well worth the investment both by FEMA and by us. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Oh, any questions?
We're going to monitor debris removal.
We don't just put the debris removal people out on the road with monitors.
We put some of our staff with them to make sure they're handling things that are in our custody. We got to replace some street lights. We got to continue to remove debris, as Joyce said, from some city facilities, fully restore our facilities. And then, we're going to evaluate, we're going to do some additional inspections, structural ones at Andy Ramano. We're going to ride every single street, especially now that the flooding has gone, see if we've got potholes, if we've got some washing away, so if we've got some things that are sidewalks that need to be repaired. And then, we'll evaluate our response plan and plan for the future.
Any questions for Sean?
We all just do a counter action report as well, so we'll follow up with you all after we've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Very good. That's good.
Anything else, Joyce? All right. Thank you, and we'll go to Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Hey, just want to take a minute to say this is my favorite meeting of the year, every year, because I really enjoy hearing your comments about the city manager and the city attorney. They spend all year recognizing their staff and I am just appreciative that they have a moment to hear some feedback, even though during that feedback, they just, again, recognize their own staff and you all as well. They're a wealth of knowledge and wisdom, as you all know, and I am grateful to work with both of them. That, good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire and City Attorney Randy Hayes. Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
Okay, just a couple of quick comments. So, I'm pleased, Joyce, that we have the Crowder Golf Company back for storm debris. Again, we are fiscally responsible in the city of Ormond Beach. We have money in the bank and Crowder Golf knows that. So, they're here, ready to start working for the city of Ormond Beach. We will pay them, you know, because they know we're going to. They have employees, they need to get paid right away. So, because of that, Ormond Beach, I believe, gets priority service, where in the past, we have seen other municipalities sit around for months upon months before their storm debris is picked up. Again, Joyce Shanahan on top of this, making sure that the company was en route before the storm even came to Ormond Beach. So, thank you for that. Joyce, Caston Park, I am feeling Ike's frustration. This is taking forever. Let's you and I chat because I'm frustrated hearing it as well. Ike's an ambassador in the city and, you know, if what he is saying is what's coming to fruition, Concepts 1 and 5, when those were the ones that were out, you know, how does that happen? I don't know. And I always like to have good answers. So, I don't have a good answer at this point, but I know that Joyce is going to explain it to me and when she does, I'm sure she's also going to explain it to you as well, Ike. And National Night Out was a huge success last night. There were thousands of people there. You had a hard time finding a parking spot. You saw Detective Larson there cooking cheeseburgers, hamburgers, hot dogs for people. Everybody seemed to be in a very positive mood. I think moving it to October was a very wise move because it was, the temperature was just so much cooler. I don't know that the chief liked it in the dunk tank. In fact, at one point, I heard him say, I've got to warm up and he jumped out into the water himself. So, I think the water was maybe a little warmer than the air. But he was a great sport, as was Captain Roos and anybody else that participated in the dunk tank. But extremely positive night and I'm proud once again with our city. My last comment is about the infrastructure in Ormond Beach. This commission and past commissions have spent tens of millions of dollars and worked hard on non-flashy projects. Tens of millions of dollars on things like stormwater, underground projects, that it's not a new flashy building, it's not a new park. The mayor and I went to Washington DC years ago and met with the great Congressman John Mica and received funding. And he also helped us with FEMA to get paid back some money. But we were able to interconnect those Central Park lakes. And, you know, you don't know it unless someone tells you. And you heard, weeks before this storm came, the city was pumping down those, the Central Park lakes in Ormond Beach, pumping them down, preparing for the worst. And anytime a storm is named, they do that. You don't know it, but they do it. And many of the storms don't even come to Ormond Beach, but they're prepared, they're ready, just in case, so that we don't have 100-plus homes in that area that get flooded. And, you know, that's good planning, that's good preparation, it's smart government. And I'm proud to be part of a team that has worked on this infrastructure, on non-flashy things, but extremely important infrastructure projects to keep you, pun intended, above water. With that, have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Littleton.
I'll have to say that the actions of our employees working for the city over the last weekend for the storm has been outstanding. There's too many instances to name on how our employees did the right thing, did the hard thing, took care of our citizens. It's actually remarkable. And I know we have Employee Appreciation Day coming up, October 19th. Joyce, just, I know we typically do like a Publix gift card giveaway or something like that. Let's just take it up a notch. I'm sure the commission will be okay with it. I mean, they've handled this storm so well, they deserve it. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sylvie.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, Hurricane Ian modified my travel schedule. I will not be in Cuba next week as I had originally planned. I'll be here attending to, you know, things that need to be attended to. And so, I'll be able to attend the state of the city. So, I'm excited about that and so will my wife. Second, the landfill delays, I personally experienced that and on yesterday or the day before. So, if anybody's never been to the Volusia County landfill, when you've taken your own stuff in, you have to weigh on your way in and then you weigh on your way out. And you pay on your way out if you don't have, if you're not a corporate account. And so, that process, and we only have one, the county only has one set of scales. There's one scale on the way in, one scale on the way out. And there must have been 100 vehicles in line waiting. And it, you know, it takes several minutes for each vehicle to weigh on the way out and pay. And I just was shocked. I, you know, in fact, I reached out to Ben Johnson, county council at large, remember Ben Johnson today and shared it with him. He happened to be in the area. He went by the landfill and he said, hey Dwight, there's like no line at all right now, today. And of course, you know, it always works out that way, but he was going to speak to the person who runs the landfill. But that is, irrespective of that, I guess I'm kind of disappointed that the county wasn't one step ahead of us. There's a lot of things they could have done. The most obvious one is they could have just waived the fees, okay? Just waived the fees for a couple of days so that everybody can get in and get out quickly. They could have done that. Or they could have done a flat fee. They could have said, look, if you're this size vehicle, it's 20 bucks. We're not going to weigh you. Just, you know, have a 20 dollar bill out there and boom, let's get them out. Because in that line is also the corporate vehicles, the Waste Pro vehicles and the other, you know, waste management folks. So, that's really, so it's sporadic, but it is problematic. And I know, I'm sure Ben will address it to the county council. And then, last thing, Joyce, you mentioned it, seawalls. I actually have a friend who doesn't live in Ormond Beach, but lives on the ocean in a condo, got an email from their condo association saying, basically saying, if you, you know, you might think about moving out of this building. We've got an engineer engaged, they haven't, you know, they haven't determined whether or not this building is safe yet, but, and then they shared some pictures with me of the seawall and the degradation of the land seaward of their building. So, my question for the city manager is, we have some fairly tall buildings that are condos and hotels. What is the city's responsibility for the structural integrity of those oceanfront-type buildings?
It's their responsibility to do that, just like when we had that seaside collapse in Fort Lauderdale or down in South Florida. So, it really is their responsibility to do that. I don't know that we have engaged anybody to inspect any of those. We've inspected our property, but it really is their personal responsibility to do that.
Yeah, so, and I know the state legislature has addressed this to some extent and Bill, maybe you know more about this, you know, you're pretty involved with that, but, you know, I guess I'm just concerned that, yes, it's their responsibility, but the, you know, if something tragic happened, we would certainly be part of the conversation. The city administration would certainly be part of the conversation. So, I would like for us to be proactive on this and helpful.
It's probably going to be a very expensive ordeal to have an engineer look at all of those seawalls. We are having an engineer... We are having an engineer look at Andy Romano, just out of an abundance of caution, but I, you know, Randy has always cautioned us about, we can't spend public money on private property. But I'm at your direction.
Well, you know, what, what concern, what, what concerns me about, is really more so about condominiums, because you have multiple owners and, you know, you have a board and, you know, a lot of those board members, you know, just serve because nobody else will serve on the condo board, you know, not because they're any gifted in any particular way. So anyway, I just, I just bring that up. I mean, I, I, I would hate for us to not be thinking every conceivable way to be of assistance and then, you know, and then maybe something tragic happened.
Well, we can certainly reach out to them and put them on notice if they, they need to do some sort of inspection.
Yeah, it's, it's really gonna depend on the extent of damage, if any, on those private property owners, properties. And to the extent that there is any, that, that would require an inspection or some repairs that would require a permit, then that's when the city staff obviously would get involved in that. And, and, you know, after these storm events, some of this stuff happens just as a natural consequence of, "My roof is off, right? So I've gotta get a permit to do that." So that's how the staff is engaged in that. You know, we can, you know, we're always working with the building staff and the code enforcement staff, so that's a good point that you'll bring up. We'll get with them and we'll try to get out in front of it to see if there's anything additional that we can do with that. And then, you know, we're conferencing, I know the city managers are conferencing with each other. We have a conference call with the city and county attorneys coming up on Friday, so there's some things that we can talk about during those conferences. So if we're all working off of the same page, so to speak, then we can make sure that the actions we all take are consistent jurisdictionally speaking. So we'll try to stay in front of that.
Right. Very good. Thank you. And with that also, good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, yeah, Ian was quite a storm. The National Weather Service out of Melbourne sent a after-action summary of rainfall and peak wind gusts across east-central Florida, compiled from not only their monitoring stations, but other monitoring stations that they have access to. And for Ormond Beach, the high was 16.59 inches rain over that time period. Doesn't mean a certain part of Ormond Beach might've not gotten a little more or a little less somewhere, but that was the, the high. And then for wind gusts, the high was 66 miles per hour. Again, doesn't mean someplace else might've gotten a little higher wind gust or a little less wind gust. But I think it's important to point out that this storm was not a hurricane when it got to us. It may have been barely a tropical storm. Could've been considered a depression based on these numbers, as far as the wind goes. But yet, just on the, the path of it, the sheer size of it and the slow duration of it, you look at the impact that it had statewide and on our city, it just goes to show you that every storm event is different. I think when you look at storm surge, a lot of people never really comprehended what that term meant. The videos that you see now on, on YouTube or other social medias crystallize, or should crystallize in people's minds, how dangerous a storm surge can be. If you didn't understand it before or fully comprehend it before, now you absolutely should. And so for the future, when you hear warnings and you look at tracks, I mean, obviously you're gonna make up your own mind as far as what you wanna do. But people who previously thought they were safe or, "Oh, I can ride this out," depending on the situation, may wanna reassess that and really pay attention to what emergency management officials are telling them. I've said before how our staff almost reacts reflexively when, when hurricane season gets here, storm season gets here. They hear the word and they spring into action. And I can't give enough accolades for the tremendous work that they did preparing, enduring and responding to this storm. Commissioner Kent, you talked about the interconnection of the Central Park lakes. That was done after the crash, market crash of '08. So it was a depressed time in our country and our city. So it was almost like a public work stimulus project in the multi-millions of dollars that we did. And it had a dual purpose. It served a recreational purpose, but also, very importantly, it served a stormwater management purpose. And you saw our staff utilize that in a very intelligent way to our residents' benefit. We were lucky to be a part of that process and I know you'll remember, the words were spoken back then, after that No Name May storm event in 2009, when we had 176 homes damaged or flooded, we said, "Never again. Not if we could do anything about it." And so our staff heard that and they got to work. And this storm, there were maybe 20 either damaged or flooded to some extent and probably not as, as bad as it was before. So I was, as horrible as that is, I was still encouraged to see such an incredible improvement because that's what we were working towards. I think staff is in the process, over the last few days, of documenting what flooding we did have, what damage we did have. I'm hopeful that the federal grant that was withdrawn from us for the Fleming Drainage Project will now be reconsidered because if we'd had the ability to use that pump and pump directly to the Halifax River, at that point off of Fleming, I believe, because we would've been able to move a lot more water, I believe we would've had even less flooding. And I think it would've taken some of the stress off of the Timoca River and the Timoca River Basin and that northern section of the Halifax River. So I've asked staff to really document that through photos. Thursday morning, when I was driving around with the police chief assessing the damage and the flooding, we were on the phone with the city manager and I asked her to make sure we document all these areas. Our staff knows where the low areas are. They absolutely know. And so I think they've done that and will continue to do that. I've got pictures that I can send you, Joyce. I know the rest of us probably do as well. And so really, just, just an incredible response by staff. Very proud of all of you. And, you know, when I drove to my TPO meeting this morning, Transportation Planning Organization, I took Granada to Williamson and they were mowing the meeting, medians. It looked beautiful down Granada. They had, the street sweeper had been through, there was no storm debris. I mean, it just looked like the recovery process was well underway, so I was pleased to, pleased to see that. It was a 500-year storm event and the flooding was, I think the governor called it biblical. So it's just an unusual event and staff responded very well to that. As far as National Night Out, that, that would've been easy to cancel. I think everybody would've understood that based on the events, but we were well enough into the recovery and as it turned out, it was just what the community needed at that time. And it was an amazing response. The pictures are incredible. You look at the smiles on the kids' faces, talking to people last night, they were glad to be out. They'd been cooped up, trapped inside for an extended period of time. And just a tremendous sense of community. So kudos to the police department, kudos to leisure services. And I think I had the opportunity to talk to a lot of our employees during that event, former employees, current employees, asked them how they rode out the storm, learned some stories about our employees. We really have amazing people working for the city and some surprising personal stories that are just incredibly impressive. And I, I love talking to them, learning about them, and they have hearts of public service, just like our city manager and our city attorney do. And so seeing them share that and work hard for all of our residents is, is inspiring. So with that, I wanna talk about Friday night. Realty Pros is doing an annual event. It's a community appreciation night at our Rockefeller Gardens. They do hot dogs, they do face painting, all kinds of great things. It's usually a hu, a huge turnout for that as well. Also, movies on the Halifax, trunk retreat coming up. Saturday is the Real and the Fun Fishing Tournament. And then next Tuesday, I believe it is, October 11th, the State of the City. That'll be followed by a Walk with the Manager on October 14th. That starts at the casement. So if you have questions, concerns, issues, or just wanna take a nice walk in a beautiful city, you can join our city manager and do that. Employee Appreciation Day, let's do this as the last thing. Commissioner Littleton brought up Joyce taking it up a notch for our employees and commission, obviously within Joyce's spending authority, but I was curious if we wanted to talk about that a little more, asking our city manager to maybe find a way to make that event extra special in recognition of the hard work that they do on a, on a daily basis. Is anybody else interested in that? Or have any thoughts or ideas on that?
You know, Mayor, it's, it's a, it's a nice idea. It feels nice. We just did a mid, mid-year wage adjustment because we care about our employees. It was the right thing to do. We did that. It wasn't budgeted. We funded it. I don't think this is a tremendous amount that would have to take place. I'm just, that fiscal conservative in me, I'm always a little cautious on, on the fly to, to approve something like that. Any employee that knows me knows how much I appreciate them and, and, and care about the job they do for our residents in the city. But I, I leave it in Ms. Shanahan's hands. I think that, you know, she's more than capable to make the right decision to make sure that our, our employees are feeling appreciated. And I think I saw Mr. Mayor, where you're gonna be there, so that's always a good thing. Yeah, that's right.
Awesome. Commissioner Selby, anything?
I think I would rely on the city manager's recommendation.
Perfect. So Joyce, you've heard loud and clear, everybody trusts your judgment and we'll go with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night.